Is there anyone else who would care to speak at this time?
My name is Mary Ann Biggs and I live at 164 Greystone Drive, Front Royal. It's been a long night and you've listened patiently. You've listened to ideas, you've listened to lots of different opinions, you've listened to concerns. We all know that there are troublesome things happening in our community. And we know there are systems in place and work being done right this minute to try to deal with those things. I don't know how they're going to turn out and nobody knows how they're going to turn out. But one thing I do know, and that is that our community needs to move forward. And I believe that support of this budget is a key to moving our community forward. Everybody's told you have a really tough decision to make. Nobody needed to tell you that. You make tough decisions. You've made a lot of them and you'll probably make more. And I have confidence that you will make the decision tonight to move this community forward in a positive way. Thank you for your service. Good night.
Is there anyone else? Please come forward.
Jerry Maitico, 157 Remount View Road. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board and county staff, I appreciate the opportunity to speak for you this evening. Much like the last hearing we sat in, we've heard a lot of people talk, a lot of passion in reference to the budgetary process. I want to share with you just a small guiding principle that I've tried to use throughout my short lifetime so far. And that is, don't be so quick to judge someone until you understand their whole story. And I want to apply that to this very Board. When it comes to the budgetary process and I hear the scrutiny over the budgetary process, I'm not so quick to judge because I understand your whole story. I understand the countless hours that this very Board spends with county staff, department heads scrutinizing the budget, going through and looking at where we can cut, where we can reduce expenditures, what can we hold till future budgetary processes, et cetera. We talked, and I spoke at the last meeting in reference to the strides we've made with this Board in reference to support of our fire and rescue system. Certainly, I have not watched TV or read a newspaper, no offense, guys, because certainly social media has been my entertainment over the last several weeks, or close to a month now. And you see so much, I'm going to call bad information floating around on social media and people seem to grasp a hold of that. And they are very quick to judge. They don't know the whole story. I watch the emotions. I've spoke to many of you in the parking lot, in a grocery store, or by telephone, and I see your reactions here today and I understand the support and the dedication that you give in the budgetary process and review. I just whispered in the chief's ear in the back, said, "How many hours do you think you really put in to a budgetary process?" And certainly that varies from year to year based off of the budgetary demands. But to see that man walk out of the office with a three-ring binder, a calculator, and 18 notebooks under his arm, he's got a playbook that looks like John Madden with numbers circled moving from here to here to here to here. And to really look at, "What are you doing, Chief? I'm going home. I need dinner, work on the budget." Outside of the office, that's outside of the meetings. That's the really, outside of the conversations that we have over a cup of coffee or in the office on where are we at today, where are we at tomorrow, and where is our fire and rescue system heading? We talk about budgetary processes, we're not only tasked with looking at tomorrow, we're tasked with looking at five, 10, or 15 years. So certainly if we talk about cutting waste, that's certainly a priority when it comes down to any budgetary request. Certainly, a gentleman in the back of the room said something that really kind of perked my ear up a little bit, and that was, is he's been forced to make career decisions with his heart and not his wallet. And that's something that the fire chief has always tried to hold to the Department of Fire and Rescue Services as, you know what? He wants to create an environment for our career and volunteer men and women to want to come to work to every day. And I think county staff does an excellent job in trying to reduce some of those expenditures. I have not personally gone through the budget line by line, page by page, but I know staff does. I know that you all are tasked with that decision. Talked about fire and rescue support and looked at the strides we have made. Rivermont Fire Station, it's come under fire. It's under fire on social media today. It was alluded to in the meeting, you know, the Rivermont volunteers were here. They stuck around. They had to leave. They're volunteers. They have careers. They have families at home. That's the challenge that's faced today. We worked with that volunteer leadership, as Mr. Stanley showed, to build a cost-effective and affordable, long-term station. Talked about, I heard tonight mention of a elaborate social hall. The volunteers are finishing the social hall. That's not a taxpayer expenditure. The volunteers have to fund that social hall. Okay? So that's just a misnomer as it comes to that. We talk about, I'll get my funny in here for a minute because I think the chief and Doug will like this, is, you know, we talk about cuts. My fire marshal vehicle got cut out of the budgetary process. You know, I'm due for a replacement vehicle. It's a necessity. You have heard a firefighter today talk about cancer prevention and trying to move to a pickup model to where the carcinogens are not in the passenger compartment riding with the employee on a daily basis. Take cars away. County staff doesn't need cars. Two weeks ago, I was eating dinner with my family and the pager went off. Fire and rescue was dispatched for a house fire. Vehicle in the driveway, unknown if occupants are home. I got in my county vehicle and I responded to the incident scene and I went into fire suppression mode. That was before the third due fire company arrived on the scene. So yes, we can make those decisions and be quick to make those decisions, but what are the true impacts of those decisions? Put projects on a freeze. We look at how long have we worked towards our staffing plan, our long-term staffing plan. Putting that staffing plan, that project on a freeze has the potential to impact lives. 10 firefighters is all we can guarantee you on a daily basis. Our volunteer system supplements those 10 career staff, not the other way around. The dynamics of the fire service has changed. We've come to you as a Board and asked for 15 additional staff members through a grant process. We're going to have to fund that. You understand the impacts of that. We went through the cost projection numbers with you. This was not an easy decision for you as a Board. We went over a lot of information. We looked at a lot of response data and statistics. This was not a, "Hey, we need 15 people." Okay, go get them. We are looking at cost-effective solutions. If we do not get awarded that grant process, we still have to look at our staffing and response numbers. Rivermont Fire Station, putting that on a freeze, how is that going to impact? I wish the folks from Rivermont were still here because they wanted to speak to that. Tomorrow night, we go before our planning commission to talk about a live-fire training facility. That's not a tax increase project. I've been cornered about that, is in this time, do you think you really need that? That money is already sitting in the chief's budget. We've had that money. The fire chief has worked on a method to save that money over a long-term plan. We're not asking for a tax increase for that particular project. Staff, the county fire chief, fire and rescue staff, county administration is working diligently to spend every possible tax dollar in a fiscal sound way. Is that way understood? Are there areas that we can cut, reduce expenditures? Likely so. Moral of the story is, is I know your whole story. I'm not quick to judge. I've worked alongside this Board. I've worked alongside our fire and rescue leadership for many years now, and I am not quick to judge. I've studied this Board. I've watched each and one of you painstakingly go through this process over and over, and I know that certainly you make hard decisions based off of the facts that are presented to you. And that's what we're asking for you today, is to look at the education, look at fire or rescue, look at your county employees, and make an investment into people utilizing the facts which have been presented to you. As a taxpayer, as I said last time, and I'll say it again, I would certainly support a tax increase if it supports and increases the quality of life of the family which I have chose to raise here in this locality. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I'm Mark Bauer. I live at 405 Overlook Drive in Front Royal. And there certainly have been a lot of good points brought up today. And I'm not going to take more than three minutes. I'm a certified internal auditor. I'm a certified fraud examiner and prepared hundreds of millions of dollars of budgets annually in my career. And I have no doubt that your staff and you all know this budget better than anybody else in the room. But it doesn't mean that you can't do better. And again, before my three minutes are up, I want to tell you I support the proposed budget. There was a movie, As Good As It Gets. Jack Nicholson in it. It was a great movie. If you've been around it long enough, you may have even seen it. And it troubles me to think that this may be as good as it gets because I really think that the future holds a lot of promise for Front Royal and Warren County. The last time you really hit a home run from an economic standpoint, something that brought more money in than went out, like another housing development, was when the power plant came. And although it upset some people in the neighborhood, I believe that it brought three or four million dollars into the county coffers. You know, we wouldn't even be having this conversation tonight. And we actually haven't talked anything on the revenue side about potential for new income generation. But my hope is that you have something like that in mind. The power plant for that 50 acres that's out there was the best money that we ever spent in the last 50 years. And I hope that you come up with a good home run coming forward. And perhaps some of the folks in this room would be more satisfied if they knew that there was a plan going forward for income enhancement, not spending more. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would care to speak at this time? Second call, anyone else care to speak? Third and final call. Anyone else care to speak? Ms. Mounts, is there any questions that were presented?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. There were 11 from one individual and one from another individual. And here they are.
To Mr. Stanley, the firemen who spoke said they did not get physicals. Why is there 1,500 in the budget?
Jerry, your chief, can you address the issue about physicals for fire and rescue?
Good day, Jerry.
Do I have to give my name and address?
Yes.
The biggest thing about the budgets is we haven't been able to afford them. They have gone skyrocketed through. So the money that we do budget for physicals are entry-level, new hire physicals. We've got some issues with their insurance where there are some co-pays that we have to pay and so forth. But I'll tell you, there was a time when we had $8,000, I think, and we could afford a physical at that time. But a real NFPA physical now runs you anywhere from $4,500 to $7,000 per employee. I don't like silence.
Is that it? Okay. I hope that the individual who wrote that, does that satisfy your question?
Not really. Where's the 1,500 gone to?
We pay for pre-hiring physicals, okay? We get through Valley Health, which is a lot cheaper than a full-blown NFPA physical. And that amount has been working for us for the last few years. I mean, it certainly helps that we don't fire a lot of people for that. But we don't have a lot of injuries either that, knock on wood, that, you know, where we have to pay those kind of co-pays and so forth.
Okay. All right. Thank you, chief. Next question is, how much do we have to pay the FAA for the Rivermont Fire Station
Mr. Childress, if you can help us out with that one?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I don't have the number off the top of my head, and it's not actually FAA. The property was purchased from a grant through the Virginia Department of Aviation back 15 years or so ago when Airport Road was relocated. And there was a, I want to say it was an 80, 20, 90, 10 grant where the state paid the larger portion for that road relocation project. It's still part of the airport, so if the property or the portion that the fire department's going to be constructed on is removed from the airport property, then the county, by current state policy, has to reimburse the state back for the money they put up originally to purchase the property for the road project. And off the top of my head, I don't know what that exact number was.
Could we get that so we could give it to? Okay, thank you. Next question, why was the grounds and maintenance budget not transferred to the parks and rec budget when the responsibilities were?
Actually, I think we're actually in the process of transferring two park and rec employees over to buildings and grounds. Parks and Rec will only handle mowing, starting with the new fiscal year. So all the building maintenance stuff will be tied into buildings and grounds where the actual budget is for making repairs, roof replacement, things like that.
Why were the solar panels not purchased for Warren County public schools, saving $150,000 per year when it would cost the school system over $200,000 for utilities?
That's obviously a question for the school system and the EDA. County was not part of that decision-making process.
Okay. Why does the Rivermont Fire Station need a social hall instead of just being a fire station? Who will control and receive rental funds?
So the fire department, one had requested that, as Mr. Maitico stated. It'll be their responsibility to upfit it. There'll be a concrete floor. The county will still use it as a polling precinct, but they'll be responsible for finishing the floor and whatever they do to the kitchen. And I think they're looking at it as a way to fundraise like they did with the old social hall upstairs.
Why use compensation study when $12,000 was given for a master's degree? Who sets education stipends?
Our personnel policies allow for it. I believe each department head would have to approve that. It has to be included in the budget. But we have, over the years, I went to Shenandoah University and had four classes back in the 90s. So there's a number of people who've been able to take advantage of it. Individuals have to go to the department head and has to be approved, I believe, probably by the county administrator, but there's a process for that under the personnel policy.
Who is paying for Mr. Witten's EDA bill? How is he billing his hours?
We've been providing legal services to the EDA since Doug Napier was the county attorney back in the late 90s, early 2000s. Currently, I bill the EDA $90 an hour, and they're billed quarterly. Obviously, my services have increased drastically over the past six months during the investigation. But basically, the EDA does pay the county quarterly. It goes into the general fund. It doesn't go back into my budget.
And did Mr. Witten obtain a conflict of interest prior to representing both the county and the EDA?
I did speak to Mr. Madden, and he did not see it as a conflict of interest. I had emailed him and he had responded to my email.
Okay. Who chooses what vehicles are given to the employees?
For personnel policies, ultimately the county administrator for county departments, the constitutional officer, say the sheriff would be responsible for his position.
Why did Mike Berry drive his county vehicle to West Virginia?
I don't know, but we can certainly ask Mr. Berry.
Why does the county continue to purchase properties and for above the fair market value?
I think, one, if the inference is a laundromat building or property, here you had a seller that was interested in selling their property that approached the county. It's in the county's master plan ultimately for that property to either be parking lot or expansion of the government center down the road. I think we found over the years, it's more cost-effective to purchase when the property, the owner's interested in selling. This Board has not been interested in condemning property in the past. And ultimately, it's the Board and the owner have to agree on the price. In the case of laundromat, they wanted a lot more. We wanted to pay a lot less, and we, I think, met somewhere in the middle.
Is the county purchasing fusel florist? Why are unowned, unoccupied real estate holdings be liquidated to help balance the budget?
I think just in general, you've got properties that it's a long-term capital plan for the county to control, say the ones around here, around the government center. The county has been trying to sell our property on Jackson Street for the last couple of years and continue to market that property. We did sell the old social services building a few years ago. So I think the instances where properties have not been in the long-term planning for the county, we have sold those properties. Certainly, like the Ball Drive building, I think once the EDA finds the right tenant, that'll be the direction of that one as well.
Okay. I think that's been a big question. Because you've given me details about that. Can you explain why we did that?
So a great example, years ago, Penn Tab built a factory at Kelly Industrial Park. I want to say it's just under 300,000 square feet. They invested millions of dollars in machinery and tools, created about 300 jobs. They were bought out by Mead. Mead was later merged with West Vaco. And Mead-West Vaco decided to shutter the plant and close it. The property went up for sale. Winchester Coal Storage bought it, and they've been using it as simply a warehouse, I think, for overflow from Home Depot. So you have a couple employees there, part of the building's used for storage, but they're all, the 300 jobs are gone and the investment as far as machinery and tool tax are gone. So you have a situation where Warren County has very limited industrial property and limited ability to have facilities that can create jobs. The Atlantic Skyline Building, when it became available, certainly it's expandable. You can probably add 75,000 to 100,000 square feet to the existing 76,000 square feet, has potential rail access. The building's in really good shape. And the EDA made the request and the Board agreed to back it, to purchase it with the intent of keeping it from becoming a warehouse like the Penn Tab building. And the goal has been to find a tenant to either lease, lease/purchase, or purchase the building. And I know the EDA has shown the building a number of times, including the last couple of weeks. And I think, yes, we're on the hook potentially, that's in the budget, for the debt service on the building. But I think with the leads they've had from the state, it's just a matter of time before the building hopefully is leased for a company that will bring in additional tax revenue and jobs that will more than offset any expenses the county incurs in the short term in holding on to the building.
If there's no one else to come forward, no more questions. This public hearing is closed.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Warren County Board of Supervisors adopt the proposed 2019-2020 budget in the amount, am I reading from the right one? I'm not used to those big numbers, right? Which includes the budgets for county departments and the school operating fund, the 2019 tax rates as advertised, the school cafeteria fund in the amount of $2,809,800, and the sanitary district rates and budgets as advertised.
I'll second for discussion.
Well, we have a motion and a second. Do we want to discuss or take the vote? Whoever wants to, yeah?
All right. Mr. Chairman, when we had the vote about to advertise the rates, I gave a quote, Mr. Golly, and I would like to read how my feelings were. I guess that was about a month ago. "There's been a real estate tax increase six years in a row, and last year we had promised the people no new, no tax increase. And with all the broken trust going on, I'd like to at least honor what we promised last year." That was my feelings then. Moving forward, I think that we're good, hard-working people. I think that we will overcome what's occurred in our community. On a personal level, I want people to know I have four children that have graduated from the Warren County Public School System. I have one graduating this June 1st. I have one that's been a good friend with Mr. Fox's daughter. We became good friends during the volleyball season. That's on a personal level. And I met a lot of good people through my children that have gone through the school system. So it's a very difficult decision for me to say that I agree to, at this point in the history of Warren County. I wish it was different than what's going on in our community, but at this point, I would ask each department head, each department, including all the constitutional officers and the public school system, to use the monies to the best of their ability in the most efficient manner. I'd ask to start from the top downward, to trim excesses in the budget. But at this point, I would vote to keep the budget where it is right now.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to elaborate. I think we've talked about this being a tax increase, and that's because of the reassessment, the equalization rate. Our taxes we paid for 2018 were at 66 cents. We're advertising, and the current budget is 65 and a half cents per. We're advertising, and the current budget is 65 and 1/2 cents per hundred. I like Ms. Mounds. I have a number of properties in Warren County. Some of the residential properties went up. Actually, a few properties went down. I will be paying $38.44 more in taxes at the 65 and 1/2 cents. My brother and I have some property in an LLC. One of those buildings is commercial, one is industrial. The commercial rate, the commercial assessment stayed the same, and the industrial increased by $109 taxes. The other one decreased by $5.64. That's because of the half-cent difference. So, I'm supporting this budget. I believe in Warren County. I've lived here all my life, and I plan to live here the rest of my life, and so I believe our community deserves what our employees deserve, the pay they get, and our school teachers, and I just want to see our county go forward. Thank you.
Did you get this? Did everybody get this sheet? Did you have a chance to look at it?
Yep.
Because what this was, was basically what staff put together to show the impact of keeping it at the equalization rate of 59.5, and then what a one cut, 1% cut would do the whole, whole way. And this was something that staff put together to give us an idea. This was not, certainly wasn't myself or any board member advocating this. This was given as a guideline to go by from there. So, my only question to the chair for, I assume, Mr. Sayer and Mr. Fox, if you keep it low, how do we make up the difference? What would you suggest? I know a couple of years ago, I had suggested a couple of cuts, so we didn't raise it. Nobody took me up on it. So, I'm asking, what would you propose we cut? Because it's about 3 million, and 300 of that actually comes out of fund balance, so, you know, and that's a nebulous term, cut the waste. Like I said, I'm going to cut waste. I think everybody here will. But where is the waste? What would you suggest if we keep it flat?
I was, I was going to mention that we were at a work session, and I don't want to say agencies by name, but recommended two different agencies to either have a cut or less, and the answer that came back to me was not interested in doing any of these cuts, so not those particular two. So, I mean, you know, I know that we did do some cuts somewhere in the budget, and we tried to keep our costs as low as possible.
I would like to ask, I'd like to ask Mr. Stanley.
Can you talk into Speaker? I can't hear you.
Okay. I'd like to ask Mr. Stanley.
Thank you.
If we did, did not increase this as proposed, where would you make the cuts in order to bounce the vote?
If you were going to keep it at 59 and 1/2, we had to cut 3.344 million. I think you'd have to look at the cuts that I've outlined on the sheet. Again, I'll say worst-case scenario, but, you know, you've got our county raised the 3%. It's 455,000. You lose 91,000 in state revenue. We cut the $300,000 out, which is our comp plan funding. We have to, you know, again, identify sheriff vehicles. Basically, that would push us a year on the next lease round. Use some of our fund balance at 290,000. Go back and ask each of our departments to cut 2%, which will be tough at 2% for a lot of departments to do that, and unfortunately, it would wipe out a good chunk, 1.7 million of that $200,000 school increase to be able to do that. There's really, otherwise, you're cutting bodies and positions. There's not much, a good part of our capital outlay is debt service. It's for projects that we're paying for and, you know, moving forward with, but, you know, there's not a lot. We're at bone. There's no more meat to cut, so to speak.
Mr. Chairman, I, where I'm at right now is that I would support the 0.625 rate. For me, it would be a compromise. It means staff would have to go back and make some cuts, protect the taxpayers from putting paying a full burden of fees increases. That's, that's where I'm at.
And if I may, if we did that, you're still talking about cutting 2% across the board for all departments, and you're still short about 578,000 for the schools. But that's fine. I'm here again.
You said 625?
Mm-hmm.
And so, the power plant, how much revenue do we lose on that?
It was, I believe, 77,000 per penny, so if you took three pennies off, that'd be 200 and plus.
200 and some thousand from an industry on the, on the backs of the taxpayers.
Could I ask one question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Stanley, or if anybody, is this, if, if this passes the budget that it is, say, a 6 cent increase, does that take care of the future teacher raises, or is that, okay, so that's just this year?
It's year one.
Then next year, you're going to want another tax increase?
Well, I think, yeah, we had some additional revenue growth in the current budget, and I think the priority would have to be, direction from the board is, okay, we've kind of caught up on these other things. Hopefully, we won't have, like we had last year, the $600,000 loss from Dominion, and you have to go in and prioritize, and maybe you go in and prioritize, say, zero budget, everybody stay, or everybody stay where you're at, and then anything additional, we look at trying to allocate towards whether it's the school increases or the, or the county comp increases. I think, I think one of the fears, and I think Greg would agree, is that we just did the compensation study, not be able to make some progress towards it. At this point, particularly with, I think, schools knowing that years 10 through 25, they're less competitive. As was pointed out, we are more competitive in that 0 to 5 range. If you're a year six or seven teacher, at least you'd know, if I stay around three more years, I'll be in that window, and I'll have the opportunity, even if they may not get to me this year with my increase. Everybody's going to get a 3% increase. The people in years 10 through 25 will get a significant increase under the proposed budget.
Yes.
Okay. There was a speaker, I can't remember who said, but I wrote it down, that said, first-year teachers are paid more, ours in Warren County, are paid more than Frederick County and Falk Year. Was that an accurate statement?
I would say, Greg, could Greg, you promise that?
Year one.
Year one?
Our starting salary for year one is not, starting in year two and beyond, we go down. A year three will...
So, so, year one, we're competitive, but then year two and three, and then that's when they're snatching our teachers.
From there on out, we're not.
Would you like the numbers? I have the numbers from, from her.
Yes. All right. Well.
So, the highest number is the highest, the red is the lowest. We're average for 3, 5, 7, and 10. 13 and 15 fall way behind. We're average for 17, 20, 23, 25, 27, 30, 33, and we fall behind at 35, but we're not even getting them at all. Increase is actually only from 11 years to 25.
I want to thank everybody for coming out. I mean, there's been a lot of good information. I would also like to say, my mother was, is, was a teacher. She's still alive. She's retired, but she was a college professor. So, I know the emotion and the effort that teachers put into their students, and I saw all the stuff she got. Back then, we didn't have shredders. I helped her burn the, all the tests she did and everything. We had to put them in a fire and burn all the stuff so that nobody would get a hold of the stuff. So, very committed people.
That's how we heat our school.
Can I make an amendment to this as well?
Yes.
And that would be, based on the primary motion, I would also make the amendment that we cut 1.2% from each department, which is on your sheet there. I mean, it's roughly 333,000, and that way, they can start looking at it, I believe, that the ones that, well, this is more than a motion. I'll make that motion that we cut 1.2% from each department, and we take that money to offset fund balance and also take the money so we do not cut any of the nonprofits that we have currently.
Is that leaving the tax rate?
This is just to the, your motion.
Okay.
This would be an amendment. An amendment is basically cut 1.2% from each department across the board, take that money, and first and foremost, do not, do not cut the nonprofits, and then what's left over, and I'm not sure, what's left over, bump up the contingency to roughly 200,000, and then take the rest of it and offset the fund balance that we have to come up with for this year.
And is that keeping the, the rate as that suggested?
No.
No. This is an amendment to Ms. Glavas, that we do it that way. Right now, the primary motion is 65 point, 65.6, 65.5.
65.5.
Yeah.
1065.
Is there any more discussion?
Are you guys negotiating the budget right now? Is that what you're doing? You're actually negotiating this new budget?
The tax rate. The tax rate.
We are discussing the motion.
We're discussing the motion on the tax rate.
Okay, that's part of the budget, right?
We've had the budget hearing already.
Right, but if you're proposing or if you're conducting new changes to it, you have to have another public hearing.
No.
No.
It's not going beyond the advertised budget.
Not beyond.
But if you're going to keep the increase, why are you going to cut? I mean...
You're still changing the budget. You're still changing this budget.
I think, Mr. Witten, I think you should answer that question.
As long as you're not increasing the advertised tax rate, and we already had a advertised budget, and we're not increasing that amount for the advertised budget, then there's nothing prohibiting moving the money around within that budget.
So, you're not calling for any cutting of the budget?
That was my amendment to cut.
Pardon me? We're doing both.
Your motion was to take 1.2% from every department.
Right.
The total budget, yes.
Okay. And apply that to the fund balance, what we take.
To apply it to the fund balance and also to make sure there's no cuts to the nonprofits.
It's moving around in the budget.
Yeah, you just move it around.
Right.
Okay.
So, you need a second to that. I will second his motion.
His motion.
His amendment.
Should we call for a question?
On the amendment?
On you.
On the amendment.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
I still have to get verification. I can't hear you.
I said, we, this is the amendment. We cut the 1.2% across the board from all the departments, which is in there. We take part of that money, and we make sure we fully fund the nonprofits, and the rest of it, we go to contingency and also to offset the fund balance that we would be drawing from for this year's budget.
Is that leaving what I suggested on the rate?
No. That's not the motion.
What would the rate be then?
The original motion that Ms. Glavas made was a 65.5%.
65.5.
65.5.
This is an amendment to that, to cut departments and to move the money to contingency, offset fund balance, and take care of the nonprofits.
But it said 65.5.
But right now, we're only voting on the amendments.
Mm-hmm.
Only voting on the amendment.
The amendment.
The 1.2 cut.
The 1.2.
1.2.
1.2 cut.
1.2.
I call for the question.
Okay. Ms. Munson?
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Glavas?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mr. Sayer?
This is a cut 1.2%. Okay, aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Now, we have your motion.
The original motion.
Original motion.
Okay, now we have the original motion to vote on unless we have discussion. Is there any discussion on the original motion? If not, call for a question.
Mr. Fox?
No.
Mr. Sayer?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Ms. Glavas?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Don, we have another item?
Should we take five minutes and let them clear out of here? All right, we're going to take a five-minute recess. We have one more item to move on.
You're still here.
All right, we're back in order. We have one more item to address on the agenda. As a request for adoption of a resolution to set percentage of tax relief for personal property, motor vehicles for 2019 tax year.
Where is that? Where is that?
I believe that's my...
It's item C.
Oh, C.
A D.
D.
Yes, that is mine. Persuasive to section 160-109 of the Warren County Code, adopted in compliance with the State Appropriations Act, is necessary for the board supervisors annually to set the percentage of personal property tax relief for motor vehicles and within the county. I believe this is the Governor Gilmore Act back in the, way back when. So, this is part of the no, no-car tax legislation adopted by the General Assembly. The legislature has established a cap on the reimbursements that makes the localities, and it's required each locality to set this percentage as a means of providing for the reimbursement to the locality for the reduction in this tax. Commissional revenue, Sherri Sowers has calculated the rate for 2019 would be, 2019 tax year would be 39%, and the attached resolution would set the percentage for the 2019 tax year in identical language to the similar resolution we, the board supervisors has adopted in the past. I would be happy to answer any questions. Ms. Sowers, I don't believe it's present.
Does anyone have a question on the tax relief? If there's no discussion, move for a motion.
I'm moving that the board supervisors approve and adopt the attached resolution to set a percentage of tax relief for the 2019 tax year at level, at a level of 39% as anticipated to exhaust personal property tax relief funds provided to Warren County by the Commonwealth of Virginia, as authorized by Warren County Code, section 160-109.
Second.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
Ms. Glavas?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Aye.
Mr. Sayer?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Is there anything else to be brought forward tonight? I'd just like to thank those that are still here for coming out, having your voices heard. It's important that we do things like this, and it's also important that we do it with civility. As if nothing else, we're adjourned.